Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, October 14, 2025. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kyl Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle presents.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please rise for the pleasure of allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
To move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations, and I'm gonna wait for a second for Councilwoman Warwick to come back. While we wait for her, I know we have two to be read into the record. Can we do those? If you're ready? We'll let her do hers.
So, before we get started, I just want to thank Brandy Fisher from the Alliance for Police Accountability for bringing this to council, you know, for drawing up the language in this proclamation. I really appreciate it. I know that these are crazy times, and we forget that it has always been crazy times for certain communities, especially the black community in this country. And I know that for a lot of us, I grew up in LA, so, you know, when I was in high school, there was the Rodney King incident, was sort of a defining incident in my younger days. And I think, you know, as a white person, that was always in my life. And then I remember specifically during the, we say the Black Lives Matter movement like it happened recently, right? But the sort of, I guess, the awareness, the global awareness of it. I know for me, I remember, you know, everyone kind of has their story, that moment that just, you know, knocked them over. For me, it was Philando Castile. I don't know if you remember, it was a cafeteria worker who was shot in his car in front of his girlfriend and her, you know, and her young child. At any rate, so, you know, we all have these stories, and of course, you know, so many people in the black community have stories of their own. I know Councilman Mosley, you have shared stories of your own, just, you know, really terrifying. So, with that, we're going to read this proclamation in honor of George Floyd. Whereas George Perry Floyd Jr., born October 14, 1973, in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and raised in Houston, Texas, was a beloved son, father, brother, and friend, who sought a better life for himself and his family while inspiring those around him through kindness, perseverance, and faith. And whereas on May 25, 2020, George Floyd's life was tragically taken in Minneapolis, Minnesota, in an act of senseless violence that became one of the most visible miscarriages of justice in modern American history, igniting a moral reckoning that reverberated across the world. And whereas his final words, "I can't breathe," became a painful and powerful rallying cry for justice, equality, and accountability, compelling millions of people from all walks of life to take to the streets and demand an end to police brutality, racial discrimination, and the systemic inequities that continue to plague our nation. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh, standing on a legacy of resilience and activism, joins in that global call for change, with residents, organizers, and community leaders coming together to denounce injustice and to reimagine a city rooted in fairness, transparency, and shared humanity. And whereas more than five years later, the struggle for justice remains ongoing, evidenced in the continued disparities faced by black communities in housing, healthcare, employment, education, and interactions with the criminal legal system, reminding us that the work of equity and inclusion is not complete. And whereas, in this moment in history, when truth and justice are often tested, it is vital for the people of Pittsburgh to remain vigilant, determined, and united in the pursuit of a society where every person is treated with dignity and respect, regardless of race, faith, or background. And whereas George Floyd's legacy is not only one of tragedy but of transformation, his death catalyzed movements for reform, reawakened civic consciousness, and reminded us that silence in the face of injustice is complicity. And whereas by honoring George Floyd's birthday each year, the city of Pittsburgh reaffirms its commitment to justice, its solidarity with all communities who have suffered from inequity and violence, and its belief that remembrance must be coupled with action to create a more just and compassionate future. Now, therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 14, as George Floyd Day in the city of Pittsburgh, and calls upon all residents, institutions, and organizations to reflect upon the enduring lessons of his life and death, to speak truth in the face of injustice, and to stand in unwavering solidarity with all who continue the struggle for freedom, fairness, and equality.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move, second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
It's been approved.
I just want to say thank you to the council members who co-sponsored this and signed on, which actually acknowledges, you know, that you share the values and understand what's happening. I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Bart Warwick for having the courage and the strength to go ahead and to put this forth, and also for us as a city as we're changing administrations, as we see what's happening around our country, you know, with the federal regime moving in on cities, and we see the list being sought out, that we hold firm to our values here locally and make sure that we uphold them. Thank you.
All right, do members want to come up?
Sure. We have all members?
Sure. Teresa, do you want to use this?
Folks, for Susan Coman, Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation, please come forward. Every year, this is actually my last proclamation for breast cancer awareness, but I want to thank you for the work that you do every day and every year for people struggling with breast cancer and surviving breast cancer in many cases. So, thank you for the work that you do. And we want to make sure that people get their mammograms and do what they have to do to be healthy, and there's resources around. So, I just want to say, Councilwoman Strasburg is going to read the proclamation, because I left my reading glasses at home. So, I apologize.
I'll be her companion reader today. Whereas the Susan G. Coman Organization was founded in 1982 from a promise between sisters, becoming the world's leading nonprofit in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas Coman has invested nearly $3.6 billion in research, community health outreach, and policy initiatives in over 60 countries, and is the second-largest funder of breast cancer research globally, following the US government. And whereas, through direct support services such as the Patient Care Center and the Financial Assistance Program, Coman has provided essential care and financial relief to over 220,000 individuals navigating breast cancer treatment. And whereas the annual More Than Pink Walk unites communities across the country in shared strength, remembrance, and advocacy, bringing together survivors, caregivers, researchers, and supporters to raise awareness and critical funds. And whereas, in addition to the annual walk in Pittsburgh, the Coman Foundation is holding the National 2025 Coman Virtual Walk, Walk Where You Are, More Than Pink Walk, to be held on Saturday, October 25. And whereas the Pittsburgh community walks in solidarity with those affected by breast cancer, honoring survivors, remembering those lost, and fighting to end breast cancer through this local expression of global action. Now, therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Susan G. Coman Foundation for their unwavering dedication to ending breast cancer. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of October 2025 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion approved.
Second.
On favor say aye. Congratulations.
Good morning. Thank you so much for this proclamation and acknowledgement of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. My name is Molly Sweet, and I am Development Manager for all of southwestern PA for Susan G. Coman. And what that means is that I handle all things public-facing and fundraising-facing, so I help raise the funds. I want to share two things about Pittsburgh right now. So, I just learned that of the 30 therapeutics and stage four therapeutics for breast cancer, Coman has had a funding hand in 29 of them, of all 30 that have been FDA-approved. And I also want to share that a lot of that, the genesis of those discoveries, were right here in Pittsburgh. We have two Coman scholars that have been funded to the tune of almost $3 million here, and have made huge advances right out of Pittsburgh. So, all of the efforts are seen right here in our region. Thank you so much for your support, and don't miss us at the walk on May 17.
Sure. All members will come up.
Thanks for pointing out that I didn't do my job well, because I should let everybody know, we do have an incredible, incredible helpline, and it's helped for absolutely everything, whether it be, where do I get this doctor? Where's a support group? I need to pay my bills. How do I get to my treatment? Call 1-877-GO-COMAN, K-O-M-E-N. And that is the assistance program is my favorite thing that we raise money for, because it truly, truly does move people towards survival and getting to their much-needed treatments. Thanks so much.
I just want to point out that I also asked Karen Mitchell, who was a social worker with Salvation Army, who refers women to a ton of help. So, thank you. Wait, here's your pro, wait. Is this breast cancer? Don't have them. I don't know what I do with them. Well, Ashley Kabinis and folks, please come forward. I just want to say, we're going to be doing a proclamation for Karen Mitchell soon too, but I want to thank Ashley for the work that she's been doing. In a world where everyone's fighting, and there's so much anger and meanness going on, she's one of those people that wants to bring people together, that's working together, and to do positive things in our community. She always looks for the way, always calls people or looks for ways to work together, and will make sure that she has accurate information. I appreciate that you do that. But the things that she does for the community is amazing, and just her presence alone in the community has been such a blessing to so many of us. So, I want to thank her for all that she does. But we want to acknowledge her today for some of the things that she's been doing. And here, we'll give, Councilwoman Strasburg is going to read the proclamation for us, too.
Whereas Ashley Kabinis is the co-founder of Westside Cares, a community organization designed to support civic and social events and promote safer and healthier communities. And whereas, Westside Cares has supported a range of community initiatives, including youth job training, free tax assistance for young adults, neighborhood block parties, transportation to events and food banks, and services for seniors. And whereas, Ashley also serves as Program Manager for South Pacific ACTS, sorry if I pronounce that wrong, Achieving Change Through Transitional Employment Services, which works to prevent violence in Pittsburgh's South Side Hilltop communities using a trauma-informed approach. And whereas, ACTUS provides a year-long support, is it ACTS?
Yeah.
Sorry. ACTS provides a year-long support program for high-risk individuals, offering coaching and assistance with basic needs, in partnership with outreach groups like Reach and Cure Violence. They also offer paid cognitive behavioral sessions and transitional job skill training. And whereas, in May 2025, Ms. Kabinis was honored by the New Pittsburgh Courier as one of the Fab 40 Under 40 Class of 2025 for her service to Pittsburgh communities and her volunteerism. Now, therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh proudly recognizes Ashley Kabinis for her outstanding service to our communities, and congratulates her on being named to the Fab 40 Under 40 Class of 2025. Be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 14, 2025, to be Ashley Kabinis Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve? Second it. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. I would like to first thank Councilwoman Teresa Kyl Smith and all of you council members for the proclamation. I also want to thank my supporting team over here for all of the support that I get with Westside Cares and the ACTS program. We've been kind of doing it off the record for a couple years, but now we're finally about to take off and launch in 2026, so that's really exciting. The ACTS program is at its second cohort of fellows, so that's really exciting, too. If anyone is interested in donating or volunteering for Westside Cares, I do have my contact information available as well. Thank you.
Tim Stevens. Do you want to come up? Do you want to come up for the photo?
All council members also come up for the photo?
Council President Lavelle presents, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October 18, 2025, to be Iota V Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilmember Kyl Smith presents, be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, October 15, 2025, to be Teresa Marie Ursula Habib Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move, second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both proclamations have been approved. That's, sorry. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of a certain official action or deliberation, which may be before city council. Perfanny will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given
Good morning. My name is Janine Mount-Washington. Today, a topic of utmost interest, community impact. When you feel unsafe, your world becomes smaller. Your voice becomes quieter. Your choices become fewer, and your future feels further away. A community member, Darla, once told me, "We're the ones who get treated as the problem." Ironically, my grandparents heard these same words when they sought custody of my sibling, but we have laws now about that. Another neighbor in Mount Oliver told me about the kids on her block, "They are more strung out than the adults." A teacher confided in me that they stop raising their hands, because they think no one will believe them anyway. And in homes I visit for work, older clients say the same. This has been happening for decades. Some cite the 90s, others cite the 80s, some as far back as the 70s. These are different voices, different roles, different decades, same truth. Children are being left behind. And the symptoms? Predictable. Withdrawal, hypervigilance, silence, distrust. These are not misbehavior, these are not rebellion, they are trauma. How many generations of scars before we admit this is systemic? We already recognize these patterns in adults, in domestic violence, in sexual assault, in communities marked by gunfire and grief. We call it trauma then, why not now, when it is the children? And the cost? Oof. Schools spend resources policing behavior that is actually a cry for safety. Social services fight fires they didn't start. Healthcare shoulders wave after wave of mental health crisis. Families fracture. Our neighbors learn to look away. And every time we do, the wound grows deeper. America's children deserve more than empty promises. Pittsburgh's children deserve better. When you protect the child, you protect the future. Question I'm about to ask you will not go away, not in five years, not in 50. What story will this community tell its children when they asked why nothing changed? And will you be proud of the answer? I know you may not have the direct power to fix this, but I came here first because you deserve the truth, and because change doesn't start at just one table. It starts in every room where somebody finally says enough. To everyone who has heard the sound of my voice over the past couple months, I hope it's been clear. You had the right to know what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh. Follow updates on Instagram at @ForTheDukes, and I hope to see some of you at county council for my next statements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, downtown, in Brussels, Belgium. I stand for uncensored freedom of speech, as I have for more than a decade here. I'm a candidate for mayor of Pittsburgh 2025, Initiative Three, Local New Party Government Depending Upon Advanced Information and Intelligence matrices and neighborhoods. The sole Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter requirement for candidacy for mayor is three years residency, HRC Article 2, Section 202. That's it. So, anybody who is a Pittsburgher who has three years residence and claims to be a candidate is a candidate, no matter what the Allegheny County Election Division says. A council concern is equal time rule, ET compliance. So, you councilor claimants surely would object if your competitors for your council office, or competitors for the office of mayor, were and they are deprived of ET by local established media, and if they were or are insidiously made inaudible, invisible, on KDKA, WTAE, WPXI, all violators of 47 U.S. Code Section 315, the U.S. Equal Time Rule, or for political candidates. Will of council, I think, is necessary here. A correlated council concern is intensified info flow via Apex Intelligence in any district, so all neighborhoods. But there's a problem, a number of problems. One, how many neighborhoods are in your district, councilors? Two, what are the boundaries in your neighborhoods, or around your neighborhoods, in your district? Three, what are the cultural neighborhood identities? Something which Mr. Giampolo has pointed out repeatedly that was ignored with regard to the skate park. And do you, number four, do you offer your citizens information weekly? If you answer these questions, first three unknown and no to the third, your quality of information is very close to zero. I hear from people all over this city, they never answer. I hear from people all over this city, they never answer. They never answer. That's in a hyperbole, but it is basically the pattern. I've established a network coming out from this city-county building to all 90 neighborhoods. WTAE, WPXI, and KDKA will face a lawsuit.
(applause) Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Carlino Giampolo.
Good morning. Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. Certain issues before city council focus and bring to light the very depth of a council member's strength of character and dignity. The illegal skate park in Panther Hollow is one of those issues. My two testimonies last week underline councilmember Barbara Warwick's accountability in supporting the skate park as the public face, voice, and leader of the skateboarders. I will reiterate what I said to her then. You do not have the strong moral character to be a council member. Time to resign. This council member has jogged numerous times through Panther Hollow in the early morning hours before the skateboarders arrived. She is therefore completely aware of the quiet and peaceful atmosphere of our Italian neighborhood that my parents' generation fought to protect and preserve. However, that ideal serenity is shattered by the piercing noises of the skateboarders as soon as they arrive in the illegal skate park. Barbara Warwick, who does not represent Panther Hollow, dishonors my parents' generation with her shameful public advocacy of the illegal skate park. She has passed her shame on to all the council members here, except Councilmember Anthony Cockle, who has demonstrated the courage to support our community. Now, the other seven council members will have to make their own decisions. Councilmembers Teresa Kale Smith, Deb Gross, and Erica Strasburger. I ask each of you to imagine if your own parents experienced the skateboarders' piercing noises penetrating their homes and neighborhood, forcing them to shut all their doors and windows. What if they had asked you to shut down the illegal skate park? Would you continue to take no action? Councilmembers R. Daniel Lavelle, Bobby Wilson, Kari Mosley, and Bob Charlin. I ask each of you to imagine that same scenario. What if your parents had asked you to shut down the illegal skate park? Would you continue to ignore them? I now ask all seven of you to now take a clear, firm position. If you would accept that kind of experience for your own parents, then simply send me an email stating, "I support the skate park in Panther Hollow." However, if you would not accept that kind of experience for your parents, then simply send me an email saying, "I support shutting down the skate park in Panther Hollow." Please respond by the end of the day. A non-response will be understood as support for shutting down the illegal skate park in Panther Hollow. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Our next speaker is Chris Murray.
Hi, I'm Chris Murray, Squirrel Hill, District Eight. I'm here representing Inform Up. This week, we have four survey questions with 93 responses. With respect to the registered community organization powers, we asked registered community organizations, RCOs, should have the power to negotiate on behalf of residents and development deals such as the Esplanade in the North Side or Bakery Square in East Liberty. Thirty-nine, oh, sorry, 39 respondents, 45% either somewhat or strongly opposed, with 36 or 41.9% somewhat or strongly in support. One comment from someone on the South Side in support, on the South Side flats, in support, "RCOs should have a seat at the table, but the city should manage these meetings to streamline the process." One comment from someone in East Liberty in opposition, "RCOs are messed up. We're just letting the most nebbie and anti-change people who run these organizations have so much power, unelected but claiming to represent the entire neighborhood, when really all they do is try to block any and all change, especially blocking new neighbors." RCOs need to have way less power, at least when it comes to new housing. With respect to, kind of in response to the public hearing with Duquesne Light, we asked, given that the city lacks direct authority over Duquesne Light, Duquesne Light's operations, which of the following actions would you most like to see the city take to encourage meaningful improvements to power grid resilience? See, 26% of respondents said advocate for stronger state oversight and penalties. 19% said offer city resources such as permits or right-of-way in exchange for infrastructure improvements. And 13% responded to joint city kind of utility task force with quarterly public reports. With respect to agreements with other cities to help support snow removal, we asked, "How should the city balance workforce agreements with service delivery when snow removal demand exceeds capacity?" 57% favored expanding such agreements with other cities or maintaining operational flexibility to ensure timely removal or minimal carve-outs for extreme circumstances. 22% preferred cooperating directly with labor on changes to the agreement, with only 7% saying that we should honor the existing agreements as is. In support of flexibility, it seems like a no-brainer that collaborating with Munn Hall would be the most cost-effective for plowing relatively isolated places in Pittsburgh. Oh, man. The full report will be emailed out. Sorry.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanisha Long.
All right, Tanisha Long, Crafton Heights. I'm here today for a few reasons. First is to thank Councilwoman Warwick for issuing her proclamation in recognition of George Floyd. While I can't speak to her skate park antics, I can say she has solidly stood behind us on many issues, matters of concern to the Black community and matters of concern to marginalized communities in Pittsburgh. I think it's important that we continue to have fierce advocacy from members of council and that council continues to stand behind Pittsburgh as they go through the transition. We're going to have a new mayor coming into office, and people are concerned. They're concerned about how council acts and operates. And when we talk about things like George Floyd and we talk about racial justice and we talk about the things that Black people in this city have been through, we have to understand that a lot of that is because this city has zero trust when it comes between their Black residents, city council, and the executive branch of the city. And that trust can't be built overnight, but that trust can be quickly lost. That trust is lost when we make midnight amendments to bills we're supposed to be working together on. That trust is lost when we put out, you know, resolutions that seek to financially bind or shackle our mayor without talking to our residents. And I wonder how often you all are in your communities talking to your residents? Because I don't see people in the West End very often. I don't see people in Crafton Heights. No one has had a conversation with me about how I feel about the city's spending. I don't think we have listening sessions as often as we should. I know that there are some council members who are engaged, but to what parts of the community? I don't think it should just be an event where we talk to the Black community one time and get their feedback. I think that, you know, a lot of things have happened in the city of Pittsburgh that makes it so that we don't necessarily trust you. And George Floyd Day is a reflection of how far we have to come. When we look at things like, you know, our police and what happened to Jim Rogers, have we made any progress there? We could have had a police chief if we hadn't delayed that decision. So moving forward, you know, what I hope to see from this council is more transparency. I hope that, you know, when we're making amendments to bills, we get those more than 24 hours in advance and the public has time to look at it and really make a comment. And I hope that investment in the changes you would like to see are reflected in what your constituency would like to see, because right now they're not. And I hope that, you know, the deals we're making, that we understand that there's a price, and that price is people, and that we aren't in bed with developers and prioritizing their needs and that we aren't making things like racial inclusion voluntary, because we don't live in that type of society where we can opt out of racism, but you can opt into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Zais.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. I just, I didn't prepare properly today, but I felt compelled to come. My name is Amy Zais. I live in the Beachview neighborhood. I just wanted to commend the council for looking towards austerity efforts. Our budget is a looming crisis right now. The budget for this year was not properly balanced, and we're looking at already dipping into our reserve funds. The preliminary budget offered by the mayor for next year does the same. So I really think that it's important that we prioritize basic services for residents, continue with the good work that's needed to plow our streets, pick up our trash, keep our neighborhoods safe, and really consider what is the priority here. And, yeah, I just want to thank the council for their work and efforts in this area, and I look forward to seeing how the budget process unfolds. That's all. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Amanda Nietrour.
Hello, Amanda Nietrour, Sheridan, District Two. Inclusionary zoning would be a part of a history of legislation guaranteeing human and opportunity rights in a world where the rich and powerful will not give up an inch unless laws force them to do so. Trickle-down economics does not work, and neither does trickle-down housing. A city where the folks who can buy half a million-dollar condos have the right to live, but not the person hired to clean that condo, is neither livable nor sustainable for anyone. Vote yes for inclusionary zoning, no for making it optional. And then also, given how District Two's sections have been left to rot, no to the proposal to weaken RCOs. We need more community involvement, not less. And if the process isn't working, you make it work better. You don't get rid of measures of accountability to safeguard the rights of people so they can speak up before we basically run roughshod over a district that has had such little investment we know it's ripe for the picking for developers. Help them work better. Make sure we have the right to live in our city. And in a world full of bigots and cowards, choose community and service over power and position. In a world of self-interested politicians, be a Barbara Warwick who's not afraid to stand up when people don't want to speak up, when it's not popular to stand up for the people who are most marginalized. You want to strengthen the rights of people per the Commission on Human Relations. But if we don't have housing and we don't make a city where they can actually reside, the people who need the most protections will be the furthest from the resources they need to take care of themselves and their families. And while we are under attack at the federal level, we need you all to stand up and do your jobs to protect us. And if you have no interest in doing that, get out of the way so that somebody else can.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Ikona Halmaikina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Chief Ikona Halmaikina. And today I'd like to pay homage to my ancestors and express my gratitude for my great-great-grandmother, who during the Great Migration, fleeing tyranny, found herself up north in 1918 to connect with lineage in this territory. I thank her for her dedication, determination, and her wisdom that she graciously shared and passed down from generation to generation and still serve our lineage today. I would like to expressly thank her for imparting with me an wavering desire to speak truths of power and for her fearless spirit. Although I never met her, it was evident in her children to whom I had the pleasure of knowing intimately and being nurtured and molded under their careful guidance. Her stoic, articulate, calm actions and deeds with the right amount of firmness gave me the right amount of everything I'd need to become the matriarch that appears before you today. I was sent here by my fierce warrior ancestors to remind you that this is stolen land. This is sacred land. And we, the Aborigines of America, are to be the stewards of our sacred land. We face systematic discrimination, economic disinvestment, inadequate schools, inadequate hospitals, and now the bus services are leaving our community. Not much has changed. We are still fighting for our true identity to be acknowledged. We are tired of the labels and the misnomers: Indians, Negroes, Color, mulatto, Black, Afro-American, and now African-American. We are still fighting to remove ourselves out of the grips of colonization. We need more meaningful approaches to reconciliation. Some call it reparations, but now more accurately stated, we demand restitution for the crimes against indigenous people of America. We encourage you as city council to take meaningful steps towards reconciliation. Plant more shady trees and make less shady deals. And it's time to put people over profit. Thank you. (applause)
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. Whose place is to protect the underserved, the poor, the sick, the disabled, the widowed, the fatherless? You all. It's a commandment. Most of you, if not all of you, put your hand on a Bible or a Torah and raised your hand and made an oath. When all other protections are getting stripped away like a stripper on a pole, when Ed Ganey wants to ensure all people in all neighborhoods will be served, you want a developer to pick chocolate or okra? Helping others versus helping pocketbook when Washington is feeding their tax-free pockets like crack? Whose job is it? Yours, 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 yours. The resegregation is happening under your watch. Special education and for special needs kids, poof, gone. Segregation at the hands of PRT. While everyone screamed over waterfront, in the locker room of the Squirrel Hill Jewish Community Center, I heard the segregation that occurred that no one heard of. The JCC in Scott Township, they put out a survey. I remember that survey. It was a manipulative survey. Pick those words wisely, and you already know what the outcome is going to be. They took away or plan to take away the only bus stop on Kane Boulevard. And I heard the ladies in the locker room, "They don't want those people coming out there." Sound like Jim Crow? They don't want them in their pool from Pittsburgh? Your people. Developers currently find loopholes. Two seniors are being targeted by tax-exempt pastors. No oversight. Gimme, gimme your money. Why aren't you putting money in the basket? They're buying up property. I went and I looked in the dockets. Take your big mega church and look up their names in the dockets, and you'll find a whole lot of landlord tenant evictions. Sheridan, Banksville, Beachview, Hazelwood. The same freaking pastor. That's just one of them. There was another case. Let us buy your house and fix your roof. Don't worry about paying tithing. There's no oversight. They're legally buying the property. It's illegal because there's no oversight for these tax-exempt mega churches. If it smells like an orange pig, it is an orange pig. Pass Ganey's bill. It's the only thing that's left for protection for the fatherless, the widows.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm not here to pick a fight with the council. I'm here because I've been a resident of Pittsburgh a long time, to my council and to my president and my council, Lavelle. Two thousand thirteen, I was called to be a servant in the Hill District, which you supported when I was called to Olivet Baptist Church to be the pastor. Two thousand and nineteen, the church closed because the conditions of the building are not habitable. Three weeks ago, I learned that some squatters made up some papers and had them notarize at the library, William Spencer and the lady next door to the church in Matuto, so that they can try to get their hands on a deed to get the property and to try to sell. They broke into this building. I've been to Zone Two. They broke into this building, have taken over twelve thousand dollars worth of copper and things out of the church. When I went to the church with the police, which you know that I'm a resident of the Hill and have been faithful, doing fundraisers, through CMU, they told me I was not allowed on the property and that I could not present the papers that was read twelve years ago when I was called to be the pastor. There's a ninety-three-year-old lady by the name of Evelyn Sales. There's a ninety-year-old woman by the name of Betty Grimage. There's a eighty-nine-year-old woman by the name of Sister Benyon. They have been members of that church for over sixty years. I'm crying out, if this is the city of Pittsburgh, that people can go on commercial property, this guy by the name of William Spencer, he's not a licensed contractor. He wants to be some preacher in the community, but no preacher goes and breaks in God's house and then tell a community that he's getting grants. And so when the building inspectors went last week, Mr. Lavelle, they told him that he was not able to do any work in that building. And he still has been defiant by placing these pictures on Facebook, by getting individuals in the community in an unsafe environment, not being insured by a contractor if anything happens to one of these people. And I need help to put a stop to whatever's going on at this building. Because I've talked with your father many times dealing with real estate. I've never tried to profit for many that I've always put my heart in. And the reason I feel like I feel now is because I put my heart in it. And these individuals who were squatters went into this building without no authorization or either legal document to be on that building. I need help.
Thank you, Pastor. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at seven fifteen Mercer Street. That's the high-rise up at the top of Bedford. And to the Reverend, when we came through, me and my daughter came through Center Avenue, she saw him taking stuff out. She said that you had said, if you see, to please, um, and she did, she did. She emailed it right then, that they were taking it out. It's about four or five o'clock in the evening. They're in the church taking the stuff out. I come down here in order to try to be able to get things or inform my community. I want the community to come down to talk to you themselves. A lot of them won't. I don't remember if you remember years ago, because I've been coming over twenty years, every meeting I could possibly come. I don't remember. There was one time I was so disgusted that I had said, that people say that I'm coming down to get whatever I could. I say, um, I had said that I will stop coming if I have a list of something, if I can be told or proved that someone would come to speak anytime there is a meeting. I feel that we should. You don't know everything. You can't know. You don't live in my community. Ms. Smith, and I'm really disgusted with you. I tell you how you show favoritism for color light complected Tim Stevens. Now, you called him up there and he wasn't even supposed to be with that group. And the reason why I'm saying that, because you remember when Brother Mel told me I could come up here and speak? And I started to speak and you made a face and the sergeant of arms called me, Ms. Brown. And they never told anybody that was called up there that they had to get down. But that's the way they do me. I have been assaulted by sergeants of arms. When you had your firemen that came down years ago and they were real rowdy and Ms., um, Orly Carroll was sitting next to me. And I said, oh, I said, I don't like this. This is too big. They're, they're kind of negative. She said, stay, stay. I didn't. And when I walked up on the hill and I'm up walking around, people had been watching city council. And they came to me and said, he put you, Riccardi put you out. No, he didn't. It was, it was Orly Carroll. I'm telling you, I've been coming. I've been assaulted by Adrian Young assaulted me, the sergeant of arms assaulted me. But I keep coming back because my son died saying he had one lung. He was begging for his life, like George Floyd was. They let him die. Nothing has happened. Five, I mean, five white cops in Wilkinsburg. And my son was saying he had one lung. He had two. My son knew he was going to die. He knew it. He was begging. He said, man, I got one lung. He had two. And they left him on the floor. And the man that knocked him out came back and assaulted my son because they left him on the floor. Five white cops.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
I didn't want to do this. I shouldn't even have heard about George Floyd. Rock to me. And if I didn't beg to this, my son would too.
Next speaker, please. Thank, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Cerise Taylor, The Missing Child, now known as Special Agent Sunshine. Lord, thank you, Lord, for your purpose for my life, to be a vessel and an instrument to do your will, not mine. Today's promise from God comes from James four seven. It says, submit yourselves then to God. Resist the devil and he will flee from you. A lot of people don't resist the devil because he's so cunning with his offers and his deception, Mosley. People fall for it and are tricked and deceived. Be not deceived. God is in control. Psalm fifty-five twenty-two says, cast your cares on the Lord and he will sustain you. Not your mama, not your brother, not your boss, your cousin. Nobody else will sustain you when you cast your cares on them. Nobody cares. Look at these people. They're showing you every day. They don't care. They definitely ain't helping me. I've been homeless in this town for two years. Why? Because they've stolen all of my resources that have my name on it by identity theft fraud. I'm dead twice on paper. That's insurance fraud. They got money for that. Whoever did that, whoever signed off on it, I curse you to death in Jesus's name. I'm in a fraudulent marriage. This is fraud in our government. I've never been married. I've never said I do because I promise you I do not, especially to whoever I'm supposed to be married to. By fraud on paper, it's a no. Social Security fraud in our government. People are getting social security checks from social security in other people's names in other countries. That's what they did to me. That's what's happening. That's why I'm unemployed. Can't work. My communication is being blocked by what? Communicate, computer fraud. Computer fraud in our government. You go on the computer, you get hacked, cyberbullied by people who can see you, everything you say and do. They see. When you put your account information in there, they steal it. That's why I don't have a Gmail account to this day or a phone. The wisdom for today comes from Proverbs fourteen nineteen. It says, evil doers will bow down in the presence of the good and the wicked at the gates of the righteous. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is David Tessitore, Banksville Neighborhood, Council District Two. So much of what we've been hearing, some of it very emotional, relates to some things I've talked about previously with you. I do welcome the opportunity, if you have a meeting where I can sit down and more thoroughly explain the community advisory team process that can fill in. I very much appreciated the remarks last week of my council representative about the registered community organizations. I had qualms against it when it was first went in. However, I also understand the concerns raised here by a number of my fellow residents wanting to have more representation, not less. And that's why a community advisory team process can fill the void. It's a structural solution. It's what I talk about, structural solutions. Same as with the idea of the neighborhood integrated services teams, a structural solution on how we can improve the services within distressed areas such as much of what we have in District Two. But if we follow as I had put down in the open government amendment that I got on the ballot, was only removed at the last minute by a politically connected judge, so we couldn't get it back on an appeal, at the core of that was a similar process that was throughout the city and would have filled the void that we hear about the need for better representation across the board by having something that is open membership that anybody can participate in through an organized process using Robert's rules. It filters for your benefit the input so that you get quality information that you can know, you can act upon. Screaming and yelling, it does vent a lot of emotions, but it doesn't absorb the energies that I would like to see filed through a community advisory team process. Actually, I have to say that Yvonne is one of the reasons I did the open government amendment, because I see all of that frustration and it's just spinning wheels. I would like to see such energies used in a constructive fashion to help you guys and maybe myself at some point be able to do better job and stand up to the vested interests that have been dragging down this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill number twenty-three fifty-seven, resolution transferring the amount of two thousand dollars within the two thousand and twenty-five operating budget from city council salaries and wages regular to the office of the city clerk for the purpose of professional services.
Next is Councilman Cargill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. He has no papers today. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number twenty-three forty-five, resolution amending resolution seven ninety-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with change agents' training for access to their learning management system and consultative assistance to adapt the city of Pittsburgh Gold Belt Workshop for e-learning by increasing the approved amount by eighteen thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed ninety thousand dollars over five years.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill number twenty-three forty-six, resolution amending resolution six ninety-seven of two thousand and twenty-three entitled, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh in connection with the URA's application for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the Brighton Heights Healthy Active Living Center in the amount of two million, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose to increase the grant, to increase the grant award amount by five hundred thousand dollars to two million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars.
And that takes us to Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. No new papers.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill number twenty-three fifty-nine, ordinance amending supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title Six Conduct, Chapter six fifty-one, findings and policy six fifty-three, Human Relations Commission, and Chapter six fifty-nine, unlawful civil rights practices by simplifying language to offer clarity defining terms specific to the enforcement of anti-discrimination provisions within the city code and preserving the anti-discrimination enforcement power of the city in the wake of federal changes.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill number twenty-three forty-seven, resolution providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the McCardle roadway reconstruction project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed one million, two hundred thousand dollars, reimbursable at eighty percent and municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs at a cost to the city not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Bill twenty-three forty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a maintenance agreement with Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for the Pittsburgh pedestrian wayfinding project at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-three forty-nine, resolution authorizing the taking, appropriating, and condemning by the city of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes certain property in the twentieth ward city of Pittsburgh owned by John and Gelf Altner located along Herndon Street and authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto in the amount of six thousand dollars. And Bill twenty-three fifty-eight, resolution authorizing council consent to an extension pursuant to nine twenty-two oh five D of the Pittsburgh Code of ordinances of the deadline for the planning commission to act on Council Bill two thousand twenty-five nineteen ninety-three.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Oh, I apologize. Oh, okay. Sorry. I lost my ways. We need a vote on the extension. So maybe have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. Bill twenty-three fifty-eight has been extended. And that takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number twenty-three fifty-four, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title One Administrative Article Nine Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter one seventy-four A, the Pittsburgh Land Bank by amending Section one seventy-four A thirteen, policies and procedures, strategic plan, and annual report to modify the Pittsburgh Land Bank's annual reporting deadline from December thirty-first of each year to one hundred and twenty days following the end of the fiscal year. from December thirty-first of each year to one hundred and twenty days following the end of the fiscal year.
And finally, for myself, I have one communication. Thank you.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill twenty-three fifty, Communication from Jake Polack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting the City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended October tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
And may we have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Tell me.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bills have been read, received, and filed. That moves us to unfinished business. Actually, we have done, so that will take us to committees for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill number twenty-three thirty-eight, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two ninety, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Soul Engineering Solutions LLC for expert witness services in connection with litigation matter filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an amount not to exceed six thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty cent over one year. Bill twenty-two ninety-one, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Nevada Burrell in an amount not to exceed three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to her parked vehicle from an accident with the city public works vehicle on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Bill twenty-two ninety-three, Resolution further amending Resolution eight fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, Effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as amended, entitled, Resolution adopting and approving the two thousand and twenty-four capital budget, the proposed two thousand and twenty-four community development program and the two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-nine capital improvement program by reducing bridge preservation and restoration fund tip by fifty thousand dollars, increasing bridge upgrades by ten thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, and increasing Swindell Bridge tip by seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of which is reimbursable by the Federal Highway Administration and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-three oh six, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Clark Hill to serve as bond counsel for the purpose of rendering any and all opinions with respect to the bonds and preparing such additional documents as may be necessary. Total cost shall not exceed one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars over a three-year period with two one-year options to extend the contract and shall be paid using proceeds from the debt issuance. Bill twenty-three oh seven, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with RT Lawrence Corporation for the provision of a remittance processing system. The cost of the remittance processing solution over three years shall not exceed forty-five thousand four hundred and seven dollars and twenty-six cents.
You have heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Ward, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill number twenty-three thirty-nine, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two ninety-seven, Resolution providing for supplemental agreement or agreements with HDR Engineering, Inc. for costs associated with the final design of the Swindell Bridge project and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed three million six hundred eighteen thousand eighty-five dollars and thirty-eight cent and increase of two million four hundred forty-four thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and eighty-one cent, reimbursable at ninety-five percent. Bill two twenty-two ninety-eight, Resolution amending Resolution three oh nine of two thousand and twenty-four, which provided for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design, final design, and right-of-way phases of the Swindell Bridge construction project and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed four million five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars and increase of seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at ninety-five percent and municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed seven thousand dollars, no increase from the previously executed agreement. Bill twenty-two ninety-nine, Resolution providing for an amended agreement for construction services with power contracting company for the CBD Phase Four project at a cost thereof not to exceed three million eight hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred ten dollars and four cent and increase of seven thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighty-four cent from the previously legislated contract authorization. Bill twenty-three hundred, Resolution authorizing the acceptance by the city of Pittsburgh of the dedication of thirty-five parcels to the public right-of-way in the first, third, seventh, eighth, eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-second wards of the city of Pittsburgh, Council Districts one, six, seven, eight, and nine, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-three oh three, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Tree Pittsburgh to conduct urban forestry programming in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Bill twenty-three oh four, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the land force to conduct urban forestry programming in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. And Bill twenty-three oh five, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements or the use of existing agreements between the city of Pittsburgh and Passack plus MTR for the professional landscape architectural services for Ammon Park at a cost not to exceed three hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
You have heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number twenty-three forty, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two ninety-four, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into, on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh, a professional services agreement or agreements with Evolve Environment Architecture to provide services to create historic district design guidelines for the Mexican War Streets and the Manchester Historic Districts, cost not to exceed thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Bill twenty-two ninety-five, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning to enter, on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh, to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Practical Preservation LLC to provide historic preservation services to complete an updated architectural inventory and national register assessment of civil rights history for the Manchester Historic District and to revise the national register form at a cost not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
You have heard the reading inside the bills. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, presenting the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill twenty-three forty-one, Reported a Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill nineteen seventy-one, Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter one seventy-three of the Pittsburgh City Code, the naming of Room nine oh two of the city-county building to the John or Civic Conference Room.
You have heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Craig Mosley, presenting the Committee on Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Bill number twenty-three forty-two, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five with a negative recommendation. Bill twenty-sixty-two, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement, agreements, and/or amendments with the borough of Munn Hall for the purpose of mutually cooperating in street operations, snow, and/or ice services at no cost to the city.
So just to remind members, if you simply vote aye, you're also voting aye in favor of the negative recommendation on Bill twenty-three forty-two. May the clerk please. Is there, you've heard the reading inside of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
No.
No on both bills or just twenty-three forty-two? Oh, you only read the first one. I apologize. I apologize. Okay.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
No.
Six ayes, two noes.
Thank you. Now for Bill twenty-sixty-two. Oh, I apologize. Okay.
Bill number twenty-three forty-three, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for October eighth, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill twenty-two ninety-two, Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for fifty-eight oh four Bryant Street at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-three oh one, Resolution authorizing execution of a deed pursuant to the Somerset Cooperation Agreement of two thousand and two by in-between the URA of Pittsburgh and the city of Pittsburgh for the sale of seven parcels located in the fourteenth ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Block eighty-eight L, Lot one fifty, Block eighty-eight M, Lot two hundred, Block eighty-eight H, Lot one sixty-one, Block one twenty-eight R, Lot one hundred, Block one twenty-eight R, Lot two hundred, Block one twenty-nine A, Lot one sixty, and Block one twenty-nine, Lot forty, Council District five, at no cost to the city. Bill twenty-three oh two, Resolution authorizing execution of a deed by in-between the URA of Pittsburgh and the city of Pittsburgh for the purchase of twenty-one parcels in the tenth, fourteenth, sixteenth, and twenty-fourth wards of the city of Pittsburgh, Council Districts one, three, five, seven, and nine, to be dedicated as public green space at no cost to the city. And Bill twenty-three thirty-two, Resolution amending Resolution two oh eight of two thousand and twenty-five, which authorized an amended cooperation agreement or agreements with the city of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of leasing vehicles, equipment, and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five by increasing the authorized amount by seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to purchase vehicles and equipment for the Department of Public Works for a new total to exceed of eight million seven hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
You've heard the reading inside of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions, resolutions. Is there anything for members? Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. I actually have a few things I just want to just touch upon a little bit. I'm going to talk first about the RCO legislation that I put forward, and someone had sent me a newsletter that was out, and I talked to Councilwoman Lavelle about this a little bit prior to, well, I'll just say I talked to you a little bit about it. And so I want to thank you for, I know you have a lot coming at you at one time as council president and trying to keep everyone working together peacefully in the best interest of the city. It's always a challenge when you're serving that role, so I want to thank you for that. But I will say that when I introduced the RCO legislation, it was based off a conversation I had with Marimba Malines from the Hill CDC. And it was a televised meeting where she mentioned about the need for RCOs to be restructured and whatever. So I told her then that I would work on it. And then I saw a newsletter where she was saying that we're trying to minimize the voice of the people or something to that effect. I can't remember the exact words, but I called her and talked to her about it because, first of all, I don't have an issue. I have two RCOs in my district. And one, I mean, I know who speaks for the community and who doesn't. You know, I've been in the community for a lot of years, long before I was ever elected, twenty-some years before I was ever elected. And I'm in the community every single day. And so I can tell you I know who speaks for the community, who doesn't. And I will just say that when I have, I don't have real serious issues with my RCOs, but I just don't like the idea of RCOs because I do feel like they do silence the voice of the people. And I do feel like there's not real structure that the government needs to be a little bit more involved. You can't just say that we're going to let everyone become an RCO and council members are in a position to sign or not sign. And it's just, it's just too much. There's just too much that's going on with the RCOs that, to me, aren't working, and to other people, they're not working, and to other people who don't believe in them or are angry because they're not an RCO. So I put the legislation in to address those issues. And I'm going to work with, you know, Council President Lavelle and others on what the RCO should look like, but I'm not going to wait forever, and I'm not going to hold it indefinitely because I feel like the city planning has had an opportunity to do so. This is not rocket science, so I feel like we should have some solution rather quickly. And if by next week we don't, then I'm willing to move forward with it. Members can vote for it or against it, but I know what I'm going to do, and I know what people think, and I'm willing to amend it. And so we'll talk about that a little bit more, too. And so I'd like to get some feedback if people have some recommendations on those. I wish that they would send those to us. The other piece is that on Friday, I introduced legislation to address our spending and to freeze hiring and to do some grant funding and a lot of other things that at one time. Now, I did that on Friday. I had pressured the person working on it at my office to get it done and to get it forward because I had been talking about it for weeks. Our budget does not look great for the next few years. I do know in twenty, you know, I think it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight, there's a debt cliff, correct? And then it looks a lot better. So I'm hearing people talking about raising taxes and the need to raise taxes, and we can't get blood from Iraq. We have residents that cannot pay. We have senior citizens not taking medication. We are not eating food, not buying things for the kids because they're worried about losing their homes. So they do things to struggle to pay their tax bills that we are charged with being responsible stewards of their dollars. And instead of doing that, we're handing money hand over fist into grant fundings. I mean, not, everybody thinks it's stop the violence. It is not just stop the violence. If it were just stop the violence, it'd be what? I think around thirty million. Twenty, I think it's twenty for this year, twenty-seven's in there, about seventeen's still left, correct? Pete, I'm asking our budget director. Seventeen is still left. We're putting another ten in, so it's about thirty thousand, thirty million there. But there's still a lot of money that we're handing out with, you know, money to CDCs, money to other nonprofits, money for housing. And the housing funding, it's my understanding, there's twenty million in there, and we're due to put another ten million in there, and we haven't spent down the twenty million for the Housing Opportunity Fund, if I'm correct. Is that correct about, I want to give accurate numbers. If I'm incorrect, please, you know, correct me. So I'll just say, but for me, that's sixty million dollars. We're talking about in just two, two efforts here. I'm not saying those efforts aren't needed, and I do know with federal cuts and other things coming, we need to be cautious and we need to make sure we have some emergency funding to help our residents in the event something does happen. But I also think we have to be good stewards of these dollars and stop and look at things, you know, really realistically. Our responsibility is to pave roads, clean snow off the streets, protect our residents, and do basic maintenance on city-owned properties. and do basic maintenance on, on city-owned properties. We can't do those things, people complain about the housing all the time. And when they talk about inclusionary zoning and the need for affordable housing, I want to scream because we have done stabilization programs in our district that have people now living in those homes. We've done senior housing that now have people living in those homes. We did all those things in our district without having inclusionary zoning, and we're seeing inclusionary zoning struck down, mandatory inclusionary zoning struck down across the country. Council, I can't speak for you, but I'm just going to say, I believe that the current voluntary legislation was introduced to make sure that there was something in place instead of nothing in place. But everybody's willing to take these game, play these games and take these stands, and I don't want to see us not have some things in place. But I came, when I first started on council, I came from a place where we actually talked to one another, not through one another, through somebody else, through social media, we actually came and talked to people and acted like adults. And so we came up with a lot of solutions and, and a mayor would talk to council, it was electors talk to electors, or the directors would sometimes come in and we'd talk to directors. But a lot of things happened back then, I mean, there were a lot of good things that we could do working together because we communicated with one another, not through other people. But I see that a lot now, it seems to be the new norm. And it's, to me, it's disrespectful to our residents because they deserve us to, to do what we need to do to make sure we're spending their taxpayers' dollars wisely and to make sure we're delivering services to our residents and making sure that we're helping people that need help when they need help the ways that we are, the ways that we can. But none of those things happen unless we have real conversations. But because there's also sunshine laws, we can't have five of us discussing all these things at one time. So it becomes a really difficult situation for us, but what I will say is, moving forward, I did withdraw my legislation on Friday, had I known that that somebody was going to go to social media first, I would not have. And I'm so tempted to put it back in place because I think that instead of having a conversation with me, I did have one with Jake. So I'll tell you what happened on Friday, I was in the, I pushed somebody to put my legislation forward, they put it forward, I didn't have a chance to read it and review it. I wanted it to be for the years twenty-six, twenty-seven. And instead of it being in the years twenty-six, twenty-seven, they started it immediately to stop grant funding immediately. My intention was never to stop people who already receive dollars. But my husband was in the E R and I didn't have time to read the legislation, so that's my fault. But I didn't find out until that night that the legislation said that. When I saw Jake Pollock and he, you know, explained to me what had happened, because I asked if he was okay with the legislation, and he said no because he was concerned about, and he said, can I send you some of our recommendations? I said, absolutely, and I said, matter of fact, I'll withdraw it, I didn't know that that was, I said, it's because I wanted to be accurate, I'm not trying to hurt anyone. I'm trying to make sure our residents aren't hurt. They're my priority, not somebody's, you know, legacy, not somebody, not council fighting with one another, not social media, not the things that people are saying and attacking people. They're my priority, it's the residents, that's who we're elected to represent. So having said that, I did, I did withdraw the legislation, I want to work with council members on it, I want to work with the administration on it. At some point, I'm going to reintroduce that legislation in, in some new fashion. But I want people to understand, it's because I'm trying to stop our residents from having to have a tax increase because we're only going to struggle for two years. After two years, and honestly, the new administration can come in here and they could probably get an agreement with the nonprofits, and we may not have this big problem with our budget. And if that happens, great, council that time can undo whatever we did this year. But I think going forward, we need to make sure we're doing something to be responsible stewards of the taxpayer money. And that doesn't mean that we're not talking to one another, and that doesn't mean we're talking to one another through social media. That means that we're actually picking up the phone and trying to work through whatever the concerns are. And so I do want to thank the people that called me and told me what was going on and that asked for my, you know, version of what was happening, and that they understood that I had withdrawn the legislation and that it wasn't intended to hurt anybody, it was intended to help our taxpayers. So I want to make sure I say all that because there's a lot of stuff being said and a lot of stuff being miscommunicated to the public. But what I notice is every time somebody wants to do something, what they do to get their way is they try to incite the public, and I call it exploiting the public, because you want to give them false information or information on your version so that you can manipulate them to come down to council, to say what they, you want them to say, to do what you want them to do, instead of having real conversations with the people that you could be working with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, thank you, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about what my constituents in the thirty-first ward experienced last winter. And I'm sure that it will sound familiar to other members. I got an email this week from Karen who said, "Most times we're having to wait days for salt trucks, and that's even if they come at all. My street becomes extremely treacherous with snow and ice causing me personally to not be able to make it into work or even leave the street." Jessica wrote, "I live on top of a hill and have had to leave my van at the bottom of the street and walk up to my house with my toddlers." Jean wrote, "Thanks for trying to help us with getting the streets plowed, last year was horrible. I couldn't get access to come down our street for a doctor's appointment because our road wasn't plowed. Also, we had numerous cars stuck on the street, three cars slid into people's yards." Last winter I heard stories of EMS having to walk up to houses. I heard a story about a woman who'd gone into labor who had to walk down the street to her parked car on the main road. I heard from seniors who are afraid to leave their homes to get groceries, prescriptions, and drive down their street for days. I saw with my own eyes city buses sliding down streets. So today, this council voted down a bill to enter into a basic agility or shared service agreement with Munn Hall, just like we have with the county and PennDOT, and just like we have for our public safety bureaus with multiple neighboring municipalities. And this snow problem is a public safety issue. As of right now, we have roughly one hundred trucks for the entire city this winter. That's one truck per neighborhood trying to pre-treat, plow, and salt over and over again as snow falls on the main roads and emergency routes, the secondary roads, and then maybe if they can get to them in the twenty-four hour period, the smaller streets. That's one truck per neighborhood making sure that nurses and grocery store workers and daycare workers and security guards and all of the people across Pittsburgh who don't have the privilege to be able to work from home to make sure that they are safe on our roads. Now, this Munn Hall deal, this Munn Hall agreement, and by the way, the bill was just to allow us to make the agreement, right, this wasn't even an agreement, it was just to allow us to have the negotiation. This, this agreement would not have fixed all of that, right? And the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in additional vehicles, which by the way are not being pulled from the two thousand twenty-six budget, I confirmed that with the budget office. It's from this year. That was not, that is not going to fix this, right, but it was a small step in the right direction. It was a small step in actually trying to do something to fix this problem that we encounter every winter. So for residents who live in our outer neighborhoods, I'm talking to people in Lincoln Place, in Brighton Heights, in Banksville, in Swisshelm Park, in Brookline, East Carnegie, New Homestead, Carrick, and even Regent Square. The next time you see your mayor or your county executive or your city council rep, ask them what they are doing about snow. Because the fact that it's bad every year, the fact that we have every truck out on the street twenty-four seven but still can't keep our roads safe in the winter is not acceptable. And remember that this council controls the purse strings. This council has two seats on the Equipment Leasing Authority Board. This council has the power and has always had the power to fix this problem to get our D P W crews the equipment they need to do their jobs instead of just pointing fingers and complaining as if we aren't the people who were elected to lead this city. So even though we didn't get this done today, I do want to give so much thanks to the Munn Hall Borough Manager and also to Director Hornstein and Deputy Director Crean, and also to the union leadership who did, you know, sit and talk with me about this, even though we couldn't kind of come to, you know, a consensus, I appreciate the conversation and I appreciate the, the respect of, of talking with me rather than shouting at me. Which has also happened. And, you know, we will, we will definitely talk about snow again, and when that time comes for the public, I really, really hope that I don't hear any more stories of people MFing our D P W workers, screaming at them when they see them out on the street, because this is not their fault. This is not the fault of our D P W workers. They are out there twenty-four seven in trucks that are often so old that the heat doesn't work and they can see the, they can see through the bottom like Fred Flintstone style. They are out here busting their humps to keep our streets safe in the winter, so. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, I really wasn't going to say anything until you said Brighton Heights. You know, I have to say, you know, just to that one part where, you know, you mentioned, what are your council people doing to fix the issues in terms of, I guess, the tax revenue issue that we have, because that's ultimately how we're going to pay for fleet? Yeah, I mean, you were at the front, like weakening a bill where we were trying to, that I introduced to try and, and other sponsors to actually try and help downtown keep its worth. The number one reason that I heard that the mayor's, the mayor's draft is all out of whack, one of the many things is that the revenue from buildings downtown is a, is a major player. So you know, once again, we have another bill on the table tomorrow that seeks to, what I believe, hamstring the city from future revenue and also income tax, people who want to live here. So, you know, if we're not doing everything we can throughout our lives downtown to make sure that there's a good tax abatement available, and then we're also, if we're not going to make sure that we can continue to grow in areas of the city and get tax revenue and income tax revenue of people who want to live here. I mean, that is one great strategy to increase revenue instead of putting on the backs of Pittsburghers and raise taxes to solve the problem. Just saying, I mean, you brought it up, you know, what is your councilperson doing, well, I thought we were at the front of trying to put together something, you know, for downtown to make sure that the tax abatement was something that people would use. I, I'm on the committee to, to meet whenever there is an application for that tax abatement, there hasn't been one meeting yet. So, I mean, I look inside and, you know, those conversations we had in the past in terms of, you know, what Pittsburgh needs and what they need in a timely manner, and I believe that was, that was definitely one of them, was to make sure that we're putting together a program for downtown, and now we're looking at the entire city. You know, I mean, everyone thinks that these, everyone thinks that people who invest in the city of Pittsburgh are just like one developer sitting in this castle somewhere. And that if we tell them what to do, then it's going to be, you know, that they, they, they'll just like not buy that yacht that year or something. Whereas there's like investors in Texas, which I've had great conversations with a lot of different people, a lot of different council people here on what they know about development, and what they continually hear is that from these, you know, from developers that they don't, they don't have, this isn't their money. This is some, someone from Texas who's invested in a project, and they're just gonna, they're just going to go elsewhere, like that person from Texas doesn't care about Pittsburgh. They don't care. So I don't know, it's just, it's just pretty wild to me to hear, you know, all this about what we're, what we're doing to make sure that we're fixing the fleet and we're two hundred million dollars in the hole, you'll see, we're going to have a post agenda. You know, we're two hundred million dollars in the hole just to get out of it. And, you know, if you want to get anywhere with that bill, I would definitely want to start it off by not saying anything about street sweepers. I'm done.
You're done, thank you.
Can I say?
Anyone else first round?
Okay.
Councilwoman Sharland?
On a very different subject, I would just like to call for the winter post-agenda on homelessness that I've done the last couple cycles there. Realize that I hadn't called for it yet, so.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll work with you in the clerk's office to get that scheduled.
Thank you.
Anyone else first round? If not, second round, Councilwoman Smith, followed by Councilwoman Warwick.
I just briefly, I, I hope that we can go back and we can talk, I, I think everybody's feeling so frustrated and so angry, I think, you know, the change of administration made some people upset, other people hopeful, made, you know, all of us, you know, the budget being so tight is making everyone so stressful. And I'm just saying, maybe we should just all take a breath and just try to figure out how we can deliver services to our residents and sit back and, and go back, you know, and talk through this, and I'm sure with your leadership, we'll, we'll get to that place where we're all working together for the, you know, rowing in the same direction for the betterment of our residents, and just, let's just take a little breath, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, just to respond to the councilman who also left out, I believe, six hundred million dollar investment in downtown, is that what we have been hearing? I don't think that it's, so he's referring to me fighting for affordable housing in his L R D, right, so that if we give tax incentives to developers downtown, that in order to get those, there'd be a modest amount of affordable housing in the housing projects that they do, that's what the councilman is referring to back when we negotiated the downtown L R D. I don't think it's fair to pit the need, the needs of our residents for affordable housing against their need for safe streets and snow removal. And I understand that we want people to, that we want to grow the city and we want to encourage development, but it is not a, it is not a free-for-all, right, where we just hand over our city to developers without without any acknowledgement of the fact that the housing that they are building is actively pushing people out of the neighborhoods by increasing the housing costs in those neighborhoods, so. I don't know, I just don't think it's a fair argument, and I will also point out that development is a long-term, right, is a long-term goal, even two years, three years, five years, ten years, right? That, that is a, and we, and we need one, right, we need a development strategy downtown, which I believe we do, right, with the six hundred million dollar investment. The snow issue though is going to be in three months. And, you know, again, I recognize that the bill that I put forward was, you know, did not end up working, was not something that folks could get on the same page about, but I think that in addition to looking long-term, we need to be focusing on solutions right now for the snow problem that is going to happen in three months, at any rate. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, for context, six hundred million is not here. And also the money that the governor did put in is far less than six, six hundred million, sorry, I say six million. That all has to be raised by, you know, the six hundred million to get to that point would have to be raised by a lot of people, not just on the backs of taxpayers, so. You know, the money that the governor came in and, and, you know, put into the city, downtown, that's great, but we should also know that money required a higher, a higher A M. that's great, but we should also know that that money required a higher eighty, a higher A M I, which was eighty percent A M I, which was what the original uh, tax abatement bill was. So, you know, for all that to line up, um, would have been great. Uh, now it doesn't, but you know, I think that we should really talk about the context of like what we're talking about when we talk about six hundred million because that's not, that's not true. And um, you know, there's a lot more effort that has to be done to revitalize downtown. Appreciate what the governor has done, but, you know, because he realized that, you know, how important it is, especially with, you know, everything that has happened in the pandemic. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any further comments from members? If not, our meeting announcements are as follows. This afternoon at one-thirty, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on bill nineteen thirty-eight relative to zoning changes in the Garfield neighborhood. Speaker registration will close at, has closed at eleven-thirty today. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October fifteenth at ten a.m., council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. tomorrow. Also tomorrow at two o'clock, council will hold a cablecast public agenda discussion on the municipal fleet and fleet efficiency report chaired by Councilman Wilson. Then on Thursday, October sixteenth at eleven a.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on bill fourteen seven, seventeen relative to zoning changes on Shatlin Avenue. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. To register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the applicable deadline or call the clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty one thirty-eight. With that, we adjourn the motion to excuse the absent member approved the minutes and adjourn the meeting. So moved. All favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.